I know, it's hard going first. You don't get a chance to think about it.
That's why we go around this circle. And if you think this is bad?
Going live right now?
I recently saw—
I'm giving a real-life moment here.
I recently saw The Good Wife. I'd never seen that. And there was a debate where everybody had six seconds to answer. And if you went over, it got subtracted from your 30-second answer. So, we're trying to be better about that. Let me know when you're ready. All right. Welcome back. Our next question, which is a one-minute question because it should be pretty easy, is about money in politics. We know that this will be an expensive race, likely costing over $150,000 per candidate for the primary, and up to three-quarters of a million dollars per candidate for the general election. There are no limits on the amount of money a candidate can raise from any source per the law. Are there any groups from whom you would not accept funding? See, it's easy.
Well, this should be pretty obvious. I've already signed the No Fossil Fuel Money Pledge, and that was an absolute no-brainer for me. Very quickly, since I haven't used all my time yet, I think the money that can be better spent—you know, you talked about how much it is—I looked it up. $6.5 billion in the 2016 presidential election. What could we do with that money? I think it also limits who can run for office, because only so many people have the connections. So, we're limiting our representation. And it also silences our voices. That's why I took the No Fossil Fuel Money Pledge, and that's why I would not take money from any corporation or any entity that would silence our voices.
So, I agree. I just caution everybody when they take that pledge. There was an incident in Chester County not very long ago where somebody made a contribution online, and they got called on it, and it wasn't their fault. So, we just have to be very careful how we say these things. But money has—to change. This dark money, these are too expensive for these races. I ran in 2014. It was a half a million dollars for a statehouse race. Legislation has to change. I'm hoping now with Democrats in the House that they'll move some bills for that. Thank you.
Elections should be about the votes, not big-money interests reducing the influence. Makes our elections fair. Money better spent elsewhere. Just need to stop it. We've got better things to spend our money on, not on elections.
So, I'm pretty sure I already signed the No Fossil Fuel Pledge, but I have never taken money from oil or natural gas or coal companies. In fact, I don't believe—and I try to never say "never" or "always," because, you know, there might always be that one time you don't remember. But in fact, I don't believe I've ever taken a contribution from anybody who didn't support the things that I believed in—the values and the values that I have. I can also assure you that nothing I have ever done has ever been swayed by any single penny that anyone has ever given me. I have done everything within my power to govern correctly and responsibly.
There are a number of organizations and individuals who I would not accept money from, including people who have been convicted of serious crimes. I've signed the No Fossil Fuel Money Pledge. I'm sure that speaks for a lot of candidates here. One thing you have to realize when you're running for public office—and I'm now in my third term as mayor—sometimes you have to say "no." Sometimes people want to make a donation to you because you're going to make a vote on something that's going to come up in six months, and you should say "no." And that's something then when you run for office, you need to have in your mind ahead of time. We're competing to run Chester County as Democrats this year. I think we should be looking carefully at our campaign donations and not give the Republicans an inch when we're running against them in November, and making sure that our contributions are from people in this community so that the voters know that we can represent them come January.
And what we're looking for here are simple answers, not the drilled-down explanations, okay? Anyone who lives here knows what happens with road congestion, especially during rush hour. Anyone who tries to get around Chester County knows that with the exception of the R-5 and limited bus routes, one needs a car to get around the county, or they can't get into Philadelphia. So, if elected or re-elected, what would your transportation priorities be? Not a lot of detail, just the high-level priorities.
Well, certainly more train service. I'm working in Phoenixville now on the Mayor's Task Force to bring train service to Phoenixville. But we also need other transportations to bring seniors to services they need, to bring people to CBIM from the southern part of the county. They have virtually nothing. So, we need to have more than just a scoot. We need to do more. And I think, again, that we can partner to do that.
It's very, really important. There's some, I guess, dysfunctional connections between the train and the bus routes, I guess. You know, as I mentioned earlier, with the connections to Lancaster alongside, I guess, Phoenixville heading up to the 222 corridor. So evidently, you know, north to southeast to west, there's got to be some kind of a continuous connection and collaboration with the contiguous counties.
So, public transportation in Chester County is a challenge, has been for quite a while and continues to be. We need to make sure that we are using the county seat on the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to make sure that the priorities that we have as a community are being met. Transportation was a large part of the update to our comprehensive plan, Landscapes III, which, for those of you who don't know, has been a nationally award-winning plan since 1989. The county has and can continue to fund—or partially fund—certain parts of infrastructure that will support expanded transportation options. So whether it's in parking garages—which we have—which the county has invested some money in—or parking lots or other kinds of infrastructure, there are a lot of ways that we can invest the money that we have to make sure that transportation options are able to become available to those communities.
This is a great question. I really appreciate it. First, we want to make sure that every urban center or borough that wants it has access to regional rail. As we're implementing Landscapes III—which I agree is a great plan—I think we should be implementing it more strictly and encouraging development in our urban areas and restricting development in some of our rural areas. We want to connect those places with bus routes and other types of public transportation options—from rural sections at Tridifern to Paley Train Station. And then making sure that places like Paley, Coatesville, Downingtown, Kennet Square, Westchester, and Phoenixville have those transportation assets so that people that live in those communities or nearby can use those transportation assets. And it'll help Chester County long-term economically as well. Third thing—and this is something that's starting to pop up in big cities—I think Chester County should be leading on this effort, and that's bike sharing. Having rented bikes so that you can take a bike from one section of the area to another through trails—from Tridifern out to Coatesville—that's my thought.
I'll build on that then. Yes. What we have to do is improve our public and active transportation, because we have people in our communities that either by choice or by circumstances do not have access to a car. America is a car culture, but we are moving away from that, and we have to move away from that. We have a growing seniors population. Chester County's senior population is growing at the fastest rate in the state. It's going to double by the year 2045. That's a lot of people that will need public transportation. And I would say we need to go a step further. We need to promote these alternative modes of transportation. It's good for the environment. It's good for managing our traffic. And it's just good for our community. It's good for connecting people.
All right. Now, the reason I'm rushing these people through everything is that these are the questions that we have to ask that are not on my list. So, Luke is handing out something to all the candidates, and they were warned that this is coming. They're going to get two questions about the information on that paper, and I'm going to read you the information on the paper, but I thought it'd be fair to give it to them. Don't get confused by the numbers. Just get the order of magnitude. Chester County is in many ways an inverted bell curve. Y'all familiar with a bell curve? Goes like this? Well, here, we have a lot of inverted bell curve. So, on the issue of jobs and housing, we have a certain amount of housing that costs very little, jobs that pay very little. We have very expensive stuff on the other end, not a lot of stuff in the middle. So, I'm going to read you some statistics, and then I'm going to ask them the questions. All right. In this month's Philadelphia Magazine, they listed the priciest housing places in the region. Of the top 50, 18 and a half were in Chester County. The reason for the "half" is that they included ZIP Code 19087 but broke out Tridifern from that, but I figure some of it is something that was there. The median price of a house in Chester County is $338,000, including $739,000 median price in East Town, which was the highest cited, and $116,000 in Coatesville. The mortgage on a $338,000 house—forgetting about the down payment—is about $1,600 a month. To afford that payment at 30% of gross incomes means one needs a salary of about $64,000 a year. Now, the median income in Chester County is a little over $92,000 a year, meaning half the population earns more and half learns less. This includes both millionaires that skew everything higher, as well as people working at minimum wage. We all know that there are a lot of jobs that pay in the $12-an-hour range for fast food, retail, et cetera. And there are many very good-paying jobs above $92,000 for mid- and senior-level employees. So now, Edwin, this is going to come to you. About 23% of the county population is 18 and under, and many of those kids get to 18 and leave for college and don't come back because they can't find a job and afford to live in the county. In addition, kids who don't go to college or the military can't afford to live in most of Chester County. How do you bring jobs to the county that answers to those who are just starting out or who want more than minimum wage and don't qualify for those mid- and senior-level things? Two minutes.
Well, as I mentioned before, I guess we have to go ahead and do something with regards to, you know, our budgets here at the county. We need to go ahead and at least, you know, implement a little bit of money to help offset these measures, I guess, because the housing is entirely way too expensive right now. When you have minimum wages of $12 an hour, it just isn't enough. You have single moms, single parents. They just can't meet it. So, the homes that are actually here—even in Coatesville or some of the underserved areas, yeah, they're in a hundred-and-some thousand dollars, but yet you go ahead and look at the real estate taxes, they're dramatically way over that. So, you're kind of really hurt no matter how you look at it. So, you really have to go ahead and deal with the issues of income and affordable housing eventually.
I'm really excited about this question because I've been working on workforce development for about 12 years now. And I want to—it's hard to get through in two minutes, but let me say a couple of things. First of all, I recognized a long time ago that the—well, knowing that there is a skills gap in Chester County—and believe it or not, there is an actual skills gap in Chester County—with high-end manufacturing, IT, and occupations like welders. And when I tell you that companies are willing to train people to become welders and then to provide opportunities for them to continue their post-secondary education while they're working—for them, that's an absolute fact. We've been working with school districts, K through 12, and post-secondary for about three or four years now to try to make sure that we have—that our organizations, our companies, and our training institutes have access to the kids in our schools who can maybe learn to understand that they don't have to go to a four-year college right away, that there are opportunities for them right after high school to make a decent living wage. And as I said earlier, employers are looking for folks to fill their jobs, and so they're willing to do a lot of things like provide financing for post-secondary education. Economic development is crucial to making sure that we have—bring in—sustain the jobs that we have here and bring in additional jobs. And through workforce development, the money that we get from the federal government through OIA and some of the strategic partnerships that I've been leading in this county for the last 10 years or so, we have the opportunity—we're on the verge. We're just about there. The companies are starting to understand that there are people in our community who need a leg up, who need a better job, and if we can provide opportunities for them to be able to train them, then they can become employed. This is a long-term problem, but a problem that absolutely can be solved. My time's up.
This question is about jobs specifically, and I'm imagining there's going to be a second question about affordable housing more generally, correct? Okay. So, I'll stick to just—
That's the next one.
All right. So, I'll stick to just jobs. One, we need to be marketing Chester County to emerging technologies and industries. A lot of municipalities fall behind by trying to recreate what has left, instead of going out and trying to attract what's coming next. And a lot of that has to do with getting technology companies. They're looking to move into the Philadelphia region and are looking at places like Delaware County or the Technology Center in Western Philadelphia near Penn's campus, or in places like Old City, Philadelphia, and going out and reaching out to them and marketing them on investing here in Chester County. A big reason why companies choose geographic area is infrastructure, workforce, but also where the company started. And we want to make it easy and accessible for someone to start a company here in Chester County and then grow that company and stay here over a long period of time. So, a lot of that can happen through shared work spaces and partnerships between our universities here in Chester County, regionally, including Delaware County, and also just 35 minutes on our name-check ride, University of Pennsylvania and Drexel University as well. We want those kids starting companies here, and we want to make sure that they have the resources here in this county to make sure that those companies thrive. As we're implementing state grants, federal grants, or county grants, we want to prioritize those areas in industrial centers that have been left abandoned. Downingtown years ago lost Pepperidge Farm, a lot of jobs from Pepperidge Farm, and then that Victory Brewing Company came in and hired 400 people and built a company that's employing lots of folks. We need to get those companies into our old industrial sites and make sure that we're bringing jobs to our downtown centers.
There was a study done recently on living wages in Chester County and what that actually looks like. And there's different scenarios, but the—you know, sort of an average one to pick out is one adult and one child is $23—sorry, $25.36 an hour, which I calculated out to be about $50,000 a year salary. So, you know, you're bang on. These are the kind of jobs that we need, not these low-paying ones. So, how do you bring those kinds of jobs to the counties? There's one exciting thing that we could do. I talk a lot about how Chester County should be a leader in green energy, and that would bring a whole bunch of these jobs. There would be some good manufacturing jobs, and then all the higher-level jobs that go with that. In addition to that, there's another exciting industry that Chester County is well-positioned to grow on—literally grow on—because of our agricultural base is bioplastics. Hemp has just been deregulated. Danielle Otten and people in Harrisburg are talking about some exciting things there. We could bring that here. We could particularly bring it to an area that needs jobs is Coatesville. And Coatesville has been identified by Governor Wolf as one of the opportunity zones in Pennsylvania. So, that means there are going to be incentives for industry to come here and set up. So, we need to look at things like that and grow some of these emerging industries.
Thank you. I have a lot to say on this. I will try to make it short. I am Vice Chair of the Chester County Economic Development Council, and as some of you may know, we are working on programs to bring jobs to the community in environmental, in manufacturing. We have a program called "What's So Cool About Manufacturing," if you get a chance to look at. But the thing that we're missing in my mind is that we have this opportunity here in Chester County. We have amazing universities. We have amazing colleges. We have great trade schools here. We need to match the jobs that we have now, like the 1,800 or so jobs in cybersecurity that we can't fill. We need to work with our universities to make sure we can fill the jobs we have. But remember, the bigger picture is the young people don't want cars. They need public transportation. In order to keep the companies here, we have to provide the transportation to keep our young people here. So, it's a bigger answer than just the two minutes, but my feeling is that we need to retrain people in Coatesville now that the train station hopefully will be coming. We need to retrain those people, and we have jobs for them. We have the jobs out here. We have the companies out there. We just have to keep them and make sure that we're flowing jobs to employees to them.
By the way, a lot of these people have a lot more to say than I give them time to say, but they're actually accessible. I know. They take my calls, so they would take yours. Okay. Our next question, which you can imagine is part two of the same thing. A review of Zillow or Realtor.com bears out that there are a lot of expensive houses in the county and some at the other end of the range, but not a lot of houses in the $250,000 to $300,000 range, which is what would be considered "affordable housing." What would you do to make housing more affordable for people using government programs?
That's a great question, and there are a lot of government programs that can do that. So, the Petra development up in Phoenixville is just about finished. I am aware of two more that I can't really talk about, two more developments that are planned to be happening. What we have to do is make sure that our developers have access to and understand the resources that are available to them. So whether it's through—Ginny mentioned the opportunity zones. There are all different kinds of overlays in our different communities that will provide incentives for developers. We have to understand that the cost of materials to build is what creates a problem for the developer, so we have to be able to work with them. So, if we can continue to put together a lot of the things that we already talked about, so whether it's transit-oriented design, economic development, workforce development, bringing in those jobs, making sure that people have access to them, and providing incentives to the developers to be able to do that, it can be done. The county actually did participate in the Petra project and actually a couple others. And I'm going to forget exactly how much we did, but it was definitely seven figures. So, there is an opportunity for the county to continue to invest in those projects and work with our municipalities to make sure that they're encouraging those kinds of projects in their communities.
So, when it comes to affordable housing, I think there are a couple of things that are really important. And when it comes to approving developments, there are two ways to do it. One is with a stick, and the other is with a carrot. And I used to like—I like to look at a stick first. So, if you're going to do a major housing development in Chester County, most people find it easy to make money doing that. Maybe not easy, but they find a way to make money. And if we're going to allow major developers to come into Chester County and build housing, they should also be building affordable housing for the middle-class families that need it. We shouldn't be approving these major developments, especially in our rural areas, without making sure that some of that money is going to build affordable housing in places where we need it, and so that people can stay in their homes, especially after they retire here in Chester County and are no longer working. I mentioned earlier this train station project that we're doing in Downingtown that includes 450 condos and apartments. It increases the value of Downingtown by 17%, a community that is a middle-class, lower-middle-class community that's gone six years without raising property taxes. Plan B of that project is building 100 units of subsidized senior housing on the old train station track. That means when we do this development over here, that's going to benefit our community economically. We're going to make sure we provide more housing for people that are going to need it down the line. So, folks like my mother when she retires, or me 40 or 50 years from now, I'll get to stay in the same community where I've lived in my entire life. It's about balance when it comes to development and planning, and we want to make sure as we're building expensive homes for people to come here and raise their families, we're also encouraging and/or requiring those developers to build subsidized housing and/or affordable housing to go along with it.
I think one of the issues, too, is when you talk about 30% of—you need 30% of your gross income when they go and calculate mortgages. When we're talking about today's young people coming into the housing market, lenders are also looking at their student debt, and these numbers are getting quite high. I went to an affordable housing breakfast a few months ago, and they brought this up. And I forget what some of the figures were, but essentially, you had to have a job higher than an engineer in order to even get into the housing market. Even rent is unaffordable for so many people, and we have—our seniors population is the fastest-growing renter population. So, in buying houses and renting houses, we have issues to deal with. One thing that struck me at this breakfast was that it was supposed to be an affordable housing breakfast, and I thought I was walking into something that really, truly was about affordable housing, but it was about affordable, quality housing. And it was mostly developers, and they were showing these plans for units that were like 2,000, 2,500 square feet, just gorgeous. We need something different than that. We need something—Jessica, you've mentioned before—middle housing. I'm not sure if you're aware of what this is, but it's smaller units, almost like, you know, a house with multiple units in it, or a small—the small facilities. And build them within other developments so that we—it's creating community. It's creating walkability. It's creating affordability. That's something that we could be looking at. We need to think outside the box. One thing that did come up at that breakfast was in Kennet Square. They're doing a really good job with this, with developers working with the municipality and changing some zoning to make things truly affordable. And that's some things we can do, having some more coordination between municipalities and developers.
Well, there—I mean, there's a lot going on in the county. I think a lot of developers are stepping up to the plate. We now know that there's a crisis situation. And so, I know in Phoenixville, we're putting in, I think, 170 affordable housing units in the next probably eight years. I think some of the things that Commissioner Kazone talked about with the cost of building —in Phoenixville, I know we're trying to overcome that by putting in units within a building. So, you know, if you have five units that you can put in, in 15 units, that helps defer some of that cost. Some of the things that I'm concerned with, though, is what happens five years from now? Because unless you're getting credits from the state or grants, there's really no control over how that—how long that stays in place. So, there are some—look, we're growing in this area. We need it desperately. As part of being healthy communities, we have to have affordable housing, because that's what makes us healthy, a diverse community for everybody.
Outside the box, definitely. Currently already with Bernie One Investments, I guess, we have three main streets already we're working on. We started, I guess, with the rehabilitation, I guess, over in Phoenixville where a lot of the older buildings that have been abandoned there for quite some time, where, you know, that area is just not being served. So, there's a lot of resources available right now. I mean, the community banks, I mean, all types of lending sources are already fairly available for contractors, developers to access, you know, through a whole bunch of different asset-based lendings and things of that nature that are relatively really quick. I think the main issue is how, as a municipality, as a county, how we could address these issues and make things a little bit more affordable, dealing with fees and making sure that we can sort of smooth that process down. We're also looking, I guess, price ranges. I guess, you know, we also have to go ahead and look at smaller square footage. Not everybody's, you know, two-people income. We do have single parents. We have students. So, we need to look at some private condos as well, similar to what's already here in Downingtown over by the pond. We need to go ahead and address those square footage. The lenders are also looking, I guess, at population density proximity to major cities in order to go ahead and execute on some of these funds. But definitely, we definitely have to have a mix of these things together, and that's where we need to go ahead and reach out to the community, get some information, get the resources together, and just do it. There's just too much politics involved. Right now, the politics part is already done. The sources of funds are available. We just need to go ahead and allow these private sectors to initiate.
All right. Now, I had a couple more questions, but we're going to start with questions from the audience. And I do want to say—this is going to go to you—that I aspire to live in a tiny house, but my husband has explained that I can't fit my closet in a tiny house, but I aspire to that. I want one. I do. These are questions from the audience, and just like at the Oscars, I have no idea what they're going to say. And so, if I completely can't read your writing, I'm sorry. So, our first topic is Hispanics and diversity, and the question says, "Since the last—" the question says, "Since the last census, Pennsylvania has seen a 28% increase in our Hispanic population, and two cities, Kennett Square and Coatesville, rank in the top 10 for having the highest Hispanic populations in the state. As Commissioner, what do you think our county can do to make sure government services are accessible and responsive to the needs of our growing Hispanic communities?" One minute.
Absolutely. So all government websites should also be available in Spanish. When I was in college, for extra credit, my teacher allowed me to go to La Comunidad de Hispania in Kennett Square and volunteer for a semester, teaching GED and citizenship tests to folks there. I stayed an extra year. I loved it a lot. And I also realized that there are a lot of people in our community that could be doing more in Chester County if they had the resources to get from point A to point B. And places like La Comunidad de Hispania and Kennett Square are doing that work. And it is an unutilized, the Hispanic community is an unutilized asset in Chester County that I think we should be tapping into. I think that our county government should be prioritizing getting those communities engaged academically and from a workforce perspective, because it's something that, long-term, in Chester County, we're going to see as a big advantage.
Okay, well, I'm not going to pretend to know what the Hispanic community needs in Chester County. What I would do, first of all, is find out from them what they need. But I'm going to take a guess at what Josh said, is that we need to have, we need to have Spanish, we need to have the website available in Spanish. We also need to have the services available. So when people call and they access the different departments, they have somebody that they can speak to. One thing that I do know a little bit about, because I was volunteering to be a Zoom driver, if anybody doesn't know what that is, it's a car service that volunteers, they drive their own cars to get people to, community volunteers in medicine. So these are people without health insurance. We have this great facility in Westchester, near Ice Line, but it's very difficult for people to get there. And most of those people are Hispanic.
So I think that our local communities are really doing a great job working in this. I find that Chester County is a very charitable place, and we try to help each other as much as we can. I know in Kennett Square, they have great programs going on. Phoenixville has great programs. Coatesville has programs. We can always do more, and finding the needs. I think we kind of know what the needs are. The surveys have been done through the community health foundations, both the Brandywine and the Phoenixville, and they're starting to implement them. But we can step it up and do more, certainly.
Well, that's a sensitive subject for me, being Puerto Rican. We need to have bilingual services. We need that connection between Lancaster and Chester County. The resource clinics definitely have to be implemented. You know, information is paramount. We need the nonprofits that are already existing in place to reach out. There's no, let's wait and see who comes over here. I've been living and breathing Lancaster for the past several years, and the way those nonprofits work over there are phenomenal. They have a lot to catch up with on Lancaster. What they do with their nonprofit fundraisings, where they raise once a year millions of dollars to help and resource all of these measures to help everybody here in the community is just amazing. There's a lot to learn from Lancaster. And I'm here to tell you that the existing funds that are already available in the nonprofits, I know that Chester County is one of the richest counties, but I tell you what, we need to get the resources out. These individuals are just not going to know what to utilize if they don't know where to get it.
So I just double-checked, because I wanted to make sure I wasn't wrong, but the county website is in Spanish. That was something that the county got accomplished a couple of years ago. We also have, number of our publications are also translated into Spanish. The county and our departments, all of our human services departments work very, very closely with La Comunidad, as well as Maternal Child Health Consortium, which also does a tremendous amount of work in that area. We must continue to make sure that we're providing opportunities for people of Hispanic descent in our community, along with everybody else who needs a little bit of a leg up. I will say, one of the problems that we are having is due to the president's immigration policies, that a lot of people that live in the southern part of our county are afraid to go to work, even if they're legal. Pardon me, you might recall that several of our mushroom houses were raided. So one of the things that I've been doing on my own and through the commissioners' organization locally and nationally is to lobby to make sure that our mushroom growers have the labor force that they need. Therefore, those folks in that community have, can re-access the jobs that they had.
Okay. The next one is on college education.
What do you think about a community college for Chester County? Our students must go to DCCC or to MCC. Should Chester County something, I guess, build a community college? One minute.
Okay. Well, we don't have a Chester County Community College, but I do believe that Delaware County Community College is on Chester County property. It's over in East Brandywine or West Brandywine. And, but here's the thing, if you live in Chester County, you do not get a reduced tuition that other, that other school districts and Delaware County gets. It's my understanding that the thing that's standing in the way of that is that Chester County hasn't paid into that, and that's something that would be, make much more economic sense, to do that and expand that college if we have to, so that people in Chester County have that reduced tuition. And it's a wonderful facility.
So, going back eight years ago, my husband and I actually wanted to have a Chester County Community College in Franklin Commons. And as many of you know, in education, it is a very doggy-dog world. And there was a big fight as to who would come in and who wouldn't. I wanted a Chester County college, but certainly, we couldn't get it through. With a Republican minority, we can't get anything like that through. I always felt it was important that we educate our own, and we do it at our cost. But now there's Delaware County is here, and they're here to stay. So we have to figure out a way to have our students pay what they pay in Delaware County. And that's something that's on my list.
I agree. Cost is important. We have enough colleges and area community cyber sites available, I guess, with regards to the colleges. I guess, for me, I think we need to prioritize technical schools. We need to prioritize the shortage that we have in trades. We need to go ahead and remember, we have blue-collar workers that don't need to go ahead and go to college and become a scientist. We need to go ahead and have special people to go ahead and, you know, build us a strong foundation with all those developments that are in here. So we have a shortage of that field, and we need to go ahead and fill that void. I don't think we have enough education in trades, and we need to go ahead and partner up with the private sector in implementing that and include that into the job sector as well.
So I don't have a whole lot to add. I agree with pretty much what everybody's saying. In fact, I was approached about this when I first became a commissioner, which was in 2008, which is when, as you will recall, the economy went into the toilet. So we haven't had the kind of money coming in from real estate taxes for a very long time. We are starting to see a little bit of a turnaround in that, and I mean a little bit. So these are the kinds of things that we can really start looking at and thinking about how we can implement them in addition to all the other things that we have to do. But we absolutely should be in a situation where our residents are paying a rate that is, that at a minimum would be commensurate with what they might pay if Chester County had its own college.
Having a well-functioning and funded, accessible community college is paramount to folks living in lower-middle-class communities, middle-class communities, and folks transitioning from one job to another. I like the fact that Delaware Community College is here, because if they weren't here, we wouldn't have one. But our students here in Chester County should be paying the same rate as folks in Delaware County are, given that they're going to the same schools. And Chester County, I believe, should be contributing whatever makes sense, given the system for community colleges and what Montgomery County and Delaware County do for their counties. I think it's important in our areas that we think about education in the future, moving forward, and not just building the capacity of our community colleges and state-affiliated colleges, but expanding the program that's offered there, whether that's a situation from a technical capacity, but even learning to code on our community college campuses. That's something that people who have lost their jobs in their industry could go to a community college, learn how to do, and immediately start benefiting Chester County from an economic perspective.
What would you do to increase volunteerism in our emergency service organizations? I assume they mean the volunteer fire departments and things like that. Or what can you do at the county level to help municipalities with declining volunteerism?
Well, it's a problem. I read an article recently about some ambulance companies, because we're mostly volunteer here. You know, and my son and my daughter both went through the ambulance school. They were both EMTs. And at that time, students were volunteering left and right. I don't know why they're not, but I think maybe working with the schools might help. So we get them just as they're ready to get into 11th grade, which is when my kids started. So I think working with the schools, working with the universities, because those kids are always looking for things to do and contribute to the community. So I would say those two things. But it's something we need. I read that article, and it's pretty frightening.
Well, I think the resources are out there. We just need to reach out to the community, because I know when I grew up here in Chester County, we all did summer camps. High school, we pitched in. I worked at the police station, cleaning the police station. I worked painting the curves. I worked at the public works department. So if we reach out to our youth, I'm sure they will step up. I'm sure that they'll work for a minimum wage, as long as that'll offset their education and help them better themselves. So I think we have the resources. I think we just need to go ahead and reach out to our community and implement that. Summer camps, work with the schools. The opportunities are there for anyone to shadow any professional and do what's right. And I think that the youth are ready to go and do that.
Was that question specific to EMS or fire?
No, it just says, "Our emergency services..." Emergency services, okay. Because there are actually two different crises. One is volunteerism across all services, which is the fire service and the emergency medical service. And the other is a little more specific to the emergency medical service. So the state government just came out with SR6, which is a report on how communities can work on expedite, or improving their marketing abilities to make sure that people understand and are aware that most of our firefighters are volunteer. I think a lot of people in the community don't know that. They think that our emergency services locally are funded by tax dollars, and that isn't really 100% true. And in the case of EMS, it's not even 5% true. The federal government came out with some money, and there's a program that one of the fire chiefs in Lancaster is heading up, and I'm forgetting the name of the program, but it's to expand the marketing effort. The state is or has been, and I don't know, Danielle, you can nod or say no, working on legislation that would provide incentives to those who volunteer, as well as who provide the opportunity for people on their staff to be able to volunteer. I see my time is up. I'm going to say one more thing. EMS is at a critical crossroads, and I recently created an EMS task force, a statewide EMS task force with county commissioners and EMS providers to try to address the issue.
So I'm mayor of a small town, Dantianton, that has about 10,000 people in it and two fire departments, two fire companies that have been around for over 100 years. When these firehouses were built, they were staffed by volunteers who worked down the street at the mill, and when the alarm went off, they'd go over, get their equipment on, get in the truck, and go into a burning house and try to save someone's lives. Now, our workforce works at Vanguard, they work at Comcast, they work at the high school, they work somewhere else where they can't get there during the day. So places like Dantianton and municipalities throughout Chester County have started to pay to have someone on staff during the day during that time. Moving forward, we're going to have to find a way to fill these gaps through incentives, I believe. A good example might be, you could go, Westchester University will offer a certain amount of college credits to you at a low or reduced cost or free if you're going to volunteer for the Westchester Fire Department. Things like that, I think, will get young folks interested in volunteering in these departments. And I think we could look out and be proactive with these incentives. We can help fill some of these gaps.
It is really tough going last, because you just took my answer that I was saving. Oh, he read it. Anyway, that's what I was sitting here thinking. Obviously, this is outside my wheelhouse. I've never had any experience getting people to come and volunteer at my firehouse. I just don't have one. But I think it's a matter of outreach, and it's a matter of incentives. So there are two parts to that. Josh spoke to it. You know, there used to be this sort of thing. This is just what you did. I think there might be some young people in particular in our communities that just aren't aware of that opportunity. And that's really what it could be presented as. This is an opportunity for you. It's an opportunity for you to give back. It's an opportunity for you to get some training. And then, as Josh suggested, and I actually have it written right here, partner with universities, partner with colleges, and offer those incentives to say, you know, you do this, it counts towards credits, it counts towards, you know, something off your tuition. There, we just have to, again, think outside the box and go back to some old ways of getting people involved.
Okay, we're very quickly running out of time, so we're not going to get through all the questions. But this next question is, you're going to raise your hand if the answer is yes. You're going to not raise your hand if the answer is no. And the question, yes or no, raise your hand if it's yes, would you support countywide property reassessments? All right, so I guess that's a no, okay? And then the very last question, and I want to say, reading this off the card, this is something that in my entire life, I would never have come up with for a public forum. And so it's going to go to you first. It might be just a yes or no question, or you might take the whole minute. Here it is. Our last question of the evening, and then we'll have some follow-up. "If you're lucky enough to win the primary, will the Republicans find something in your background that they can use against you? If so, what?" I would never have thought of that. Do you have anything? Okay, okay. Kathy, you got something?
So I've run for commissioner. I ran, well, I ran for controller, I ran for commissioner, I ran for state senate, I ran for lieutenant governor. If they haven't found it, they're not going to find it.
Okay, that's a no. Josh?
I would say that I've been in the public eye in Chester County for almost 10 years now. I've been elected as Dantianton's mayor twice with over 20, 25% of the vote. I think I've been vetted by the Republican Party plenty of times, and I think we're okay.
I think I'm going to have to say no as well. And I do have an advantage, because my misspent youth years were in Canada. And it'd be kind of hard for them to find that. No, I think my life is an open book. It's out there. Everybody knows who I am and what I've done, so no.
You submit the questions, we ask the questions. So first, could we have a big round of applause for our candidates? The candidates have brought staffers and petitions. If you've made your selection, you can sign petitions for two out of five. If you sign for more than two, like three, your entire set of signatures will be validated. So walk around, they can do that. I think they're all going to hang out for a bit now, though they get five minutes before you attack them. We will be back in this space next week, Wednesday, 7 o'clock, no livestream, and we'll be talking to the candidates for row office, from the district attorney to the, oh God, pre- thank you, register of wills, recorder of deeds, and sheriff. Hope to see you then. You've been a spectacular audience. Thanks for coming.